Gentlemen, thank you for joining us. This is the October 15, 2015 meeting of the East Fishkill Town Board. This is a work session, and a work session is a meeting where the town board sits down. We talk amongst ourselves about matters of importance to the town of East Fishkill. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we start, I really don't have any announcements this evening. First on the discussion is the budget, and I would just like to compliment our town comptroller. He and I worked together. We brought in a budget that is under the New York State required tax cap, which is the inflation rate is .73 percent this year, and they do allow us a small growth factor. So unfortunately, due to New York State law, we have a lot of constraints on budgets, but we met them, and I'm very happy we did that. One thing I would like to point out that, you know, I've always said that I'm very proud of our police department, and I was really kind of shocked in this last week or so. It seems to be a lot of posts on the union website, very negative posts. We never had a really negative problem, negative relationship with the police department that I'm aware of. So I was a little bit surprised, very surprised at that, to be honest with you. Just talking about budgets too, I know now we're into October, so nobody remembers last winter, but we're still trying to make up for huge overages in cleaning up the town of East Fishkill snow budget last year. So budgets have been very, very difficult, and I'm very proud to say that we came in under the tax cap. I would like to point out that the one department that's never suffered a budget cut is the police department. The highway department has suffered budget cuts. We've cut staff in the town hall, recreation, but we've always managed to keep staffing and keep the budget, I will say this, keep the budget in the police department pretty intact. As a matter of fact, it's grown from in 2008, the police budget as a percentage of the general budget was 43.19 percent, and this projected this year, it's 51.26 percent. So I know there's a lot of talk on the police union website. A lot of these costs too, you have to look at the increase in the pension costs, medical costs that are borne by the town to make sure that our police staffing and all of our staff, you know, are properly taken care of. So, but these huge increases are not reflected in salaries. We just absorb these costs, and even at that, the total police budget's gone up to a little bit more than 50, 51 percent of the town general budget. It's very difficult in these times with tax caps and an economy that really is not recovering, but I've never had an issue with our police department. But I will tell you a few things that have happened this year. Approximately 10 months ago, one of our sergeants was hurt on the job, back injury. He's been out now 10 months, back surgery, and we're waiting to see what happens. We hope that, we hope everything works out. A little while after that, one of our officers went out with a torn Achilles tendon. He was out for a few months, a couple of months, I think. He came back. As soon as he came back, two more of our officers went out with lower lumbar issues. These were not work-related. So he came back, so then we're down three officers. Now, we know it's tight, and I understand that the PBA, and I know the staff, everybody's struggling because we have to make, you know, we have a lot of staffing issues, we have a lot of schedules to make. So we were down three, and then a few weeks ago, probably three or four, no, probably two or three weeks ago, one of our officers was hurt in the rec, injured elbow. So then we were out with that. And today, I find out that another one of our sergeants is going out on a medical problem from an injury suffered a few years ago. So, I mean, we've never seen staffing issues like this, and I certainly can understand our police force feeling this way. Obviously, you know, and we're all working. I mean, everybody in the town hall, when we lose somebody, we very rarely just replace them. We look very hard. It's been through this way with every department. I can't even talk about the cuts that highway has faced, but we've always tried to take care of our police department, and it's got, it's tough, and, and really, I got to tell you the truth, with the elbow injury and now another sergeant going out on a medical is, it is just what we call catastrophic. It has really reached that point. Don't think we don't know this. We know this. I was hoping that the two back injuries would not be going for surgery, but unfortunately appears they are, and this lengthens it. I mean, hopefully, you're just going to have a back injury and you're going to do therapy or something and come back, and we wait and see. We have to wait and see. But that being said, these are tough times for our police force, and we recognize that, and it's tough times budget-wise, but we've been talking about steps that we will take to man our police department. I'm hopeful that the sergeant that had back surgery can come back. I'm hopeful that the two officers that are going to have back surgery can come back. The officer with the elbow injury, I hope he can come back. I've never seen anything like this in my, this is my 10th year, of people being out. And, you know, you always say, okay, well, they're out, we'll get by, we change shifts, we put in overtime, and it just didn't seem to stop this year. So I know the police union is very unhappy with us. We actually told the police chief about six weeks ago, interview people. We know there are staffing issues, we have budgetary constraints, but go out and interview. And they interviewed, they vetted some applicants, they interviewed. We have somebody that we're going to hire. All I said to them was, let me find the revenue to pay for this, because under a .73 percent tax cap that the government's, the governor's levied upon us, it's hard. And I can't just say, go hire. Those days, I hate to say, are gone, but I said, give me time to find the funds to hire, to do this hire. Unfortunately, people are still going out, so this has put an increased pressure on us, and I give you my word, I will find it in this budget to hire somebody else. It is not going to be pretty, because we've cut everything. I've looked at cutting Community Day, but Community Day is something that our community likes, so you don't want to cut Community Day. I have looked at cutting the concerts in the park, but people like that. So you really have to balance, what are you going to cut? I can't cut highway anymore. We should be paving $1.2 million in highway, in paving roads. We did $400,000 this year. We're putting off, unfortunately, we're putting this off, and I know this is going to have to be made up in the future. So these are the issues that we face. We've always tried to maintain the police department, if you know how important that is. I'm just, I've just, I got to tell you, I'm shocked, because it just seems when you say, okay, everybody's going to be coming back to work, we're going to be staffed, it just does not seem to happen. So we have met with the chief of police, we've met with a detective sergeant, the town board and I have outlined what we're going to do to remedy this situation short-term as best we can, hoping our officers will heal and get back on the job soon, and basically that's where we are. And I will, I got to say this, I'm a little surprised, because the police union says, well, just break the tax cap. Don't worry about it, taxpayers don't mind paying for more officers. To be honest with you, philosophically, I don't know if anybody on my board wants to break a tax cap, but if I break a tax cap, I got to tell you what, I owe highway a lot of money, because we're so far behind in blacktopping, and if we don't catch up with our roads at some point. So it's not just one department, and it's just a lot of factors, but I think after the discussion we had with the chief tonight, and I will gut this budget, I will find the money, and it's not going to be pretty, but I will find the money, and we will do the best we can. So I know a lot of people are here in support of our police department. I support our police department. I've always spoken very highly and am very proud of our police department, and I'm frankly shocked at the police union's negative posts, but that's just the way it is. But my heart's with the town, my heart's with our police department, and I just want to let you know, we will do our best. And that's all I have to say. We will, we have a plan, and the chief will be talking to his people about it very soon. Anybody else have anything to say before we get down to this budget stuff? No? Again, we support our police department too, and it's one thing I want the police department to know. I've always said, we're on the same side. So, but we will work it out, and these are tough times for everybody. So, all right, sorry, that's my little thing. First item on the agenda is the budget discussion. Mark and I have worked very hard on the budget. We brought it down under the .73 percent tax cap with the goofy formulas that New York State allows you for growth and whatever, but I think it's a very, I know it's a very tight budget, cut to the bone last year, and we always thought the revenues were going to pick up. Mortgage taxes haven't picked up. Sales taxes, Dutchess County unfortunately, a couple of years ago capped our sales tax, probably cost us $300,000 a year. That mortgage taxes falling off, huge increases in pensions, and maybe, we don't have charts and graphs, we sometimes have them, but these are huge increases in these overhead costs, but very happy. Just to give you an example, I think, what was it, 2008, what was the pension bill back in 2008, Mark, probably $600,000?
$600,000 about, yeah.
Now it's 1.7 million. How do you keep up with this? We do our best. We cut, we cut, we cut. We're to a point where it's, we cannot cut, and, but we will get through this, and what we need to, and I've said this a million times before, we don't have a spending problem, we have a revenue problem, but unfortunately, we have a tax cap. Dutchess County has capped our sales taxes. These are our main, these are our main revenue streams. Mortgage taxes have not come back, so we're fighting this, but we have a plan on that too, but it takes time. We are looking to do a lot of redevelopment of the industrial areas of our town, and I think in the next couple of years, we're going to see some really good things happening, and all I can ask is for a little patience, because we're all struggling with this. But anyway, anybody on the town board have any questions for myself or the comptroller on the preliminary town budget?
Yeah, I'll start. Okay, so pension benefits, we discussed, we discussed that. They seem to be leveled off, dipped a little bit.
Leveled off and actually dipped a little bit, yes.
Okay, so when do you actually get those numbers?
Well, we, I'm sorry, we get, we're going to get the bill next week, is what we get, right?
Well, we'll get a bill soon for the period that ends March 31, 2016, so we'll know the first quarter's pension obligation shortly.
And do they give you a forecast past that?
And we have a forecast that we've already received for the rest of 2016 and into the first quarter of 2017. So that's what the budget numbers are based on, the forecast that the state has given me.
Okay, so parlaying that into highway, we only have $500,000 budgeted for paving this year for 16.
Coming up, yes.
Coming up. So that's a big concern for me, because God knows, like the supervisor just said, just to keep up, we need a million dollars of paving alone a year.
At least.
We're way behind. We have more town road than Dutchess County, I think, right?
About equal. We're about equal to Dutchess County.
Miles of road. We have, we have the same or more, so what do we do? How can we fix this? Can we get, is there going to be revenues more from pension benefits into 17 that we could see, or?
Yeah, I think that we may see further savings in the pension area. I mean, I don't think we're going to see enormous savings, but if we save another $100,000, we can then allocate that savings to paving. We're always hopeful that mortgage taxes will maybe not get to the levels that they were, but at least recover more than they have. We haven't really budgeted for a big recovery in the coming up budget, but again, in 2017, if there's more revenues in those areas, that can be allocated. But no, there's no magic.
But now, I hate to use the word bond, you know, but at some point, you know, when do we look at that?
Well, and I look at a long-term plan, unfortunately, the comptroller's sitting here, and I shouldn't say bond. There's going to be two issues. Either we're going to be able to get enough revenue coming in to fund maybe a $200,000 or $300,000 per year increase in highway. I think that's going to be very unlikely, and we're going to come to a critical point, because with highways, there's a critical point. Highways will deteriorate to a point where you can fix them, but they deteriorate to such a point that there ain't no fixing them, they're rebuilding them, and that's where your costs go up from maybe, I forget, and I wish the engineer was here, you know, if you use a per mile, maybe, oh, I don't know, $5,000 per mile, say, that would be if you can just cap it, but once it's gone, once you have to replace that road, you're talking four times that. So you're faced with a decision down the road, okay, do we let the roads go to such a point that we have to put in major expenses, or are we going to be able to capture them before it gets to that point? Like Lake Walton Road. Lake Walton Road is a really good example. We couldn't afford to do a $600,000, well, $500,000, $550,000 paving job on Lake Walton Road, but we did save it by doing the two shoulders.
Right.
But it needs to be capped. It's like a lot of our other roads, so, and I hate to use the bond word, and I hate to say it, but we may get to a critical point in our infrastructure where we're going to have to do a highway paving bond.
Well, you know, the roads are, isn't that our assets?
Technically, our roads are considered an asset of the town of East Fishkill, and there are certain requirements for their upkeep, yes.
Now, the state, they also, didn't they used to give us, what were they called, chips or something?
Yeah.
Towards that, and that's decreased also?
Uh, no, that, well, I don't know how far back you're going. It hasn't decreased in my time here.
Chips is around $250,000.
It's usually about $250,000. We got extra money for a couple of years because of the bad winters.
So it's not that they give you any more, it's been the same?
Well, we did receive two sort of special allocations
Okay.
In the last couple of years for, because of the winter storms, so.
And what were the, what were those allocations approximately?
They were a couple hundred, no, a couple hundred thousand.
It was a couple hundred thousand, but our snow budget was over probably $800,000. So thanks to New York State for the thoughts, but it really, yeah.
It helps, but it was never meant, that's not meant to be a long-term, you know, that was a one-off sort of benefit we got.
Okay, my other concern was in the engineering line, we budgeted $40,000 for an outside engineer, and we lost an engineer who left the town. Is that going to be enough money to cover that, John?
Well, where he is actually, unfortunately, we miss him. Our junior engineer left, but he left at a good time, because actually, he finished all the work on the Hopeful Precision Superfund Water Line, which actually should be sent up to Congressional Committee for review and hopefully approval. So it was a good time, he finished that, and we had finished the Hillside Lake grant application, which was very technical, but we do have water projects across the street. We have hired Morse Associates, they have a good water person on staff. We're hopeful to keep an eye on them and bring that in under the budget allotted. Some of this money will be returned to us, say the Hopeful Precision Superfund project is approved. I do believe we, and I'll ask Tom, I do believe the understanding was that we will recoup some of our money from the EPA in the contract that we're, hopefully EPA will sign with us. So he left at a good time, because a lot of the big, a couple of the big projects are done, but we do still have work to do.
And the joint landfill with Fishkill, that 25,000 allocation, that's half?
That's half of the cost of running the landfill.
So they pay the other half?
That's right.
And the only other thing I would say is, for the part-time electeds, the $200 increase, I would give it back, you know, I think we're all in agreement with that.
I think a number of you have mentioned that, so.
Okay, thank you for now, that's.
And you, I was going to say, Councilman Marinero, you did indicate that we would like to meet with Highway Superintendent next week to discuss our snow budget and then our snowplowing for the last few years and take a look at that, so we're going to set that meeting up.
I just wanted to touch on briefly our health insurance.
Yes.
I know a few years ago, we had passed, where we had changed, and I believe we saved, what was it, around $400,000?
First year was about 400, and then it's been declining since then, the annual savings.
And now it looks like, we were told that the premiums are going up?
By 15 percent, to the point where there's essentially no savings compared to our old health insurance plan as well.
Another thing that we can't quite control.
Out of our hands. We, I mean, we did everything we could to identify a plan that was cheaper, and we hoped that that savings would last for longer, but now we're at a breaking point. We did look into some alternative plans, but none of them really provided any savings either to employees or to the town. Try again next year. But talking with our health insurance agent, he's not hopeful that there's going to be any plans available next year. They're going to offer the same substantial savings we saw three years ago.
Right.
Two years ago.
I think it's also important to note that, you know, in today's Poughkeepsie Journal, there was an article on how the governor wants us to develop efficiency plans, which is another way to say budget, and to be more responsible for the taxpayers. I believe that we've done our end. Since the inception of the tax cap, we've been, we've been under it every year.
Every year, yep. Is that correct, Mark? We've never broken the tax cap.
Never broken the tax cap. It'd be nice if the governor would be held to the same standard with the unfunded mandates, because they represent, I believe we talked about this, around 10 percent of our budget.
Ballpark, right.
Right, so that's, I mean, between pensions, prevailing wage requirements, civil service requirements, MS4 requirements, annual reporting, that's, that's a big, that's a big expense. And again, out of our control.
Exactly.
Well, you're probably looking, I think, at the budget, the general budget without special districts, about $15 million, so you're probably looking $150,000 towards the cost of the unfunded mandates.
Well, like, well, 17 million, about 1.7 million.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, 1.5 million, yeah.
Where you said, you know, some of the costs aren't easy to say exactly what they are, if it's paying prevailing wages and stuff, but our estimates are, yeah, 10 percent of that 17 million.
Yeah, so it's going to be 1.5 million, so, yeah. Which would be very helpful if the government, if the New York State would ever do their part.
Some sort of mandate relief.
Yeah. No? Councilman, would you have anything else to say?
I got a couple of things that I come up with. I know that we have addressed the fact that revenues are not coming in, and we're all in agreement with that. Besides that, I think we have a duty to the citizens to find out some kind of savings and to build our fund balance. Excuse me, I know that before, briefly, I mentioned that there were some issues with the highway department numbers, that we will sit down and discuss that. The numbers did not match, considering the fact that we had a couple of winters, but some of the overtime that has been put in, the cost of assault compared to the previous years, there is a big jump, and I guess we're going to meet with the town.
Yep.
Highway Superintendent, and clarify this. So this is, it is a considerable amount, so we need to see, we need to have a grip on this cost, because the community knows that we budget for the highway, and they receive a certain amount of money from us, but then they control how they're going to spend that. I think that the board needs to really think how we really could control that money, because even though we have an elected official, we are accountable to the citizens, and, you know, there is an issue, I mean, somebody that looks at the numbers, the numbers don't match. So something happened, we need to find out, and not only we need to find out what happened, but how to stop it from happening in the future. We need to control that spending, that's big money. Some of that money over there, I hope that it's something that it was spent properly, but some of that money could have been put to repaving or to something else. The other thing I know, and I think the other council people, that they said that we do not need wage increases for the elected officials. I just went over some of the figures. We have been giving our elected official and our appointed people in the town a considerable, well, I wouldn't consider it a big number, but between 2.5 percent and 1.5 percent for the last four or five years. And when we add all of those up, it's roughly between $17,000 and $20,000 a year that we could be saving. And if we add up five years, we're talking about $100,000. Besides that, you know, we saw Global Foundries is planning and laying off employees in the town of East Fishkill, and IBM is out of the picture. I hope that they're only off many employees, but I think, you know, writing is on the wall. These people have a, have a plan, and Global Foundries is not accountable to the town of East Fishkill no longer. I, again, in the past, I had asked for the closing down of the Limekill facility. It is costing the taxpayers about $96,000 a year. That's another $96,000 solid money that we could save. The other thing that I was looking, and I mentioned before, is real property that the town owns, and one of them is the cannon property across the street. We have sold part of that, and everybody's saying, when the money comes in, how we're going to spend it? The money that we're going to get from the sale of that property, it's already gone. We do have another big parcel over there that I strongly think that should be sold back to the private industry. We could recoup a good amount of money from that. Not only that, but that property goes back on the tax, tax property, and will be additional revenue for the town and for the school. You know, the board needs to work on savings. Unfortunately, we know that revenue is not coming in, that's not up to us, even though we could do something about that. I spoke about before that we need to attract business in our community. The only way we could do that is, we have to ease up on our rule and regulation in the building department. I want to be very specific. People feel uneasy in coming in the town of East Fishkill and doing business in this town. I know that no business, no company wants to go in a community where it's going to cost more to accomplish what they could do someplace else. So, you know, as board members, this is what we need to work on. We are right now at the bottom of the road, and the only way we got to climb out of this is if we work together. We really, we need to sit down and really think, you know, I drive by and I see empty plazas, that is revenue that we lose. I need to, we need to fill up those parts. And one of the ways is to ease up and bring, you know, we could even have a pre-PR person to go out and actually bring people in our town. I don't see nothing wrong with that. You know, one of us, we are business people, we could, you know, I proposed in the past that probably we should have a committee, or now, and invite the community, or now to improve the business in our town. If we create, and I'm not saying that we want big industries, I'm not saying that, but if we could open up small operations, small Papa Mama stores, that will hire 10, 10 employees, five employees, I'm all for that. So right now, the problem is to create revenue. And also, whatever we could save, $10,000, you know, strongly again, I would urge this board to shut down the Limekill facility that is costing us money. I know that we have a contractual agreement with IBM. IBM is out of the pictures right now, and I really don't care about Global Foundries as far as, that we have to support opening, keeping that facility open for some possible people that are going to go and use it. Right now, you know, we need to do what we need to do. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels about this, but.
Well, I'd like to chime in about Limekill, and I understand that you've wanted to close this down from the beginning, and you've been consistent with that, and I'm going to stay consistent in keeping it open, and I understand the cost, but it's part of the services that we provide to the citizens, and recreation is not meant to be profitable. I'm saying that we can't afford to lose a ton of money on it, but there are some improvements that need to be made at Limekill. I've discussed this with the supervisor and with members of the rec advisory committee. I went through the electric bills there, and they're, they're pretty bad. They're pretty bad, because there's insulation problems, there's some structural problems there, and it's a facility that needs to have a little bit of money put into it so we can save some money on the long road with it. Not to mention, we have Julie's Jungle in there, which I believe is going to be a big anchor for that place, and you're going to see greater involvement there, but I don't want to just discard it immediately. It is a service that we provide for the people, recreation, and I think it's important, and it has been utilized.
Is it a necessary service?
Recreation is.
Or recreation, absolutely. Is that facility a necessary service?
Yes.
It's well.
It's recreation.
It's well-used.
It is well-used.
It is not. I mean, I've checked, I've checked, I've checked as of. I mean, I've checked, I've checked, I've checked as of yesterday.
Have you talked to soccer and baseball and all the other leagues that use it?
I guess you guys have to finger-point what's necessary and what's not. You know, coming from a, a business environment, we, when we see the revenue is not coming in, we shut off the lights. We shut off the refrigerator.
Recreation is not meant to make money.
We shut down a, a piece of utility that we don't use.
It's a service we provide for the citizens of the town.
But let's provide anything you want, so let's hire 10 police officers.
No, but, and, and, and shutting down, and shutting down won't, they won't hire an officer, though.
I'm just, I'm just. He's addressing me, I want to, I want to address this. You know, you want to keep services, where do we end? Where do we say this is where our services end? We tell the community that we do not have the necessary funds to, to surface the roads. And now you want to keep a facility open where not even 20 people a day use that facility from the community. Is it necessary? Yeah, everything is necessary. Somebody's in coma, and you know he's not going to be revived, you say, kid, let's keep him on life support. Okay, at what point do you decide, pull the plug? Right now, I think we are at that point. And if you guys still don't want to realize that saving $1,000, $10,000, $20,000 is what we need to do to bring back our fund balance, then let's cry that we don't have funds coming in. But how do we solve the problem?
Well, we're trying to maintain services for the people of the town. I think that's very important. Recreation is very important, and we're required to have a certain amount of recreation in town.
No, we're not, no, we're not required.
We could close, and this is, again, gets back to the balance that we tried to maintain. Like I said, we look at community, we look at different, different things that we provide. We have 80, I think we have over 80 acres of recreation fields, and, you know, we have the community center, we try to maintain them all. I don't know what the community center brings in either. It was, it was just a cost of recreation. I know you've never been a fan of, of Limekill. The fields do get a lot of use, and the facilities inside are very nice. The gym isn't the best in the world, but it's very reasonable, and I do talk to people that do use it, they do enjoy it. As Councilman Franco said, I was up there the other day, they're building Julie's Jungle up there, which is a playground for children of all abilities, which I think is just a tremendous project. So I understand you'd like to close it down, and I know we've always had this, we've always had this disagreement. I, I think it's worth keeping. I would like to take a look at the staffing, though, maybe the hours, maybe we could shorten the hours, and I think some practical things that we can do to put in place to lower the overhead up there. But that being said, I still do think it is a very viable facility, and I would like to keep it. And speaking about Global Foundries, the contract, actually, went to Hudson Valley Research Park, didn't go with IBM, so the contract is still valid and in effect. I think it goes for probably another 16 years. At that point, we won't have to be contractually obligated. But, you know, and I, and this is another point where we have a little bit of a disagreement. I'd rather, you know, we're working very well with Global Foundries, we hope to be tying into their sewer system for that area down there. Sportsdome is looking to come in, so I, I'd like to see more, and this is what we have done, you know, we're not just sitting around. We've changed our laws, as we did just a couple, last month, I think, we enacted another law to allow more flexibility in our industrial zones as far as bringing in businesses, and that's where they belong, and they should be hopefully coming in, and that's what we can do for the businesses. I agree with you, we need to bring businesses in, and I, but the attorney would also explain that. A lot of the, as you, you know, what you were talking about, roadblocks to businesses coming in, is not just in East Fishkill, it's New York State, the laws of...
It goes back to the unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
One, one of the biggest unfunded mandates is the town is responsible to enforce the New York State Building Fire Prevention and Property Maintenance Law, and that's the one that requires fed-up permits and building permits and, and inspections.
Pre-permits inspections, yeah.
But that's a, a state requirement that every town and village has to enforce.
And then there's SECR, which puts a huge burden on anybody trying to do a, a large project. But actually, we've addressed SECR in what we've done with the, with the IBM complex as far as allowing the, the original SECR standings, SECR findings to stand and enable new businesses to come in. So we, we do disagree on Limekill. I would like to look at it and see if we can cut the hours of operation and whatever we can do to save money there, but I still think it's going to be a very viable facility in the future.
If I may clarify for the community, Limekill facility that I'm discussing to close down, it's a small building that has some broken-down machines, when we have the finest, finest facilities where people with $10 a month go and exercise. I am not talking about Julie's Jungle's property, I'm not talking about the tennis courts, I am not talking about the fields that we have over there. It's a small building that is staffed from, I don't know, seven to nine, I don't understand, I don't really know.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the hours are.
But it's heavily staffed, and it's costing us $96,000 a year.
Is that the staffing you think?
So, I am specifically talking about a small building, which, like the Councilman Franco said, we need to put really a lot of money into it, which we do not have, to really rehabilitate and bringing it to certain standards.
That would come from the Rec Development Fund.
Well, one of these days, the Rec Fund is going to finish. I don't know where we're going to get the money to do everything else, that we want to take this money continuously out of the Rec Fund. So I hope that the Rec Board realizes that they also have to use this money to the best of their ability, because once we finish and we're not building this down, revenue is not coming in, I hope that I want to go to the taxpayers and ask for more money, because that's the end of the road for that.
Just to clarify, the staffing is about $48,000.
Okay. And we should be able to cut that by cutting the hours, that should be easy enough to cut, trimming back on the hours of operation.
Any, any, any hours cut would result in some...
We'll see what we can do, and we'll take a look at that, obviously.
What is the total cost of operation for that, per year?
Well, for just the building, it's about $60,000. Everything included is $81,000, but the lighting for the outdoor fields represents, you know, about $10,000, $15,000 of that, so.
But we should point out that the agreement that's being referred to here is that the, the property was conveyed to the town by IBM without charge, and over, as long as it's available...
Now, we paid $500,000.
We paid $500,000.
Yeah, $600,000.
Should have been conveyed without charge.
Yeah.
And the balance of that is forgiven each and every year that it's kept open and operating, and the employees at the Hudson Valley Research Center have the right to use it just like a town resident at the same level of pay.
Yeah. That property should have been bought for a dollar, for all that East Fishkill has done for IBM. So it was a bad deal to begin with, and if we want to keep on spending this money that we don't have on this dilapidated building, so be it.
Okay. IBM has been a boon for East Fishkill in many ways also. Okay, comments noted, and we will be taking a look at the budget, and we will be, and we will be tweaking it. Like I said, we're going to go through this budget again, so we will, we will take all this into account. Councilman Cassidy?
No, I'd just like to commend, and I spoke to Mark a couple times, on how much you guys tweaked it, and it is to the bone, and people are complaining about how little money they're going to have in some of the departments next year. And I've been telling Lori Bringleman that we were canceling Christmas for the last six years, and it looks like we might be actually canceling Christmas next year with the...
Well, we've got the celebration budget. Yeah, we cut the decoration budget, yeah. And it, so, again, that's the balance, you want to provide things that the people like, but, you know, comes to a point, you can't do it anymore.
But it was cut till, it's going to hurt in a lot of departments, and I'd just like people to know that.
Any other discussions on the budget? Obviously, the budget, the budget public hearing is November 5th, I believe we had the budget Thursday. It starts at 6:00 to go over the special district budgets, that would be the sewer, water, and I think sidewalk districts.
Correct.
And lighting, or lighting is...
Lighting district.
Is lighting included in that, because I thought that that was Admiral Lora. All right, and that will be on the 5th of November, and then we can adopt the budget thereafter. So we still have time to make any changes, any tweaks. I will be making tweaks, I will find the required amount of money that we need to help with our police department staffing issue, and we will do that. All right, if there's nothing else to talk about the budget, we will be talking a little bit about purchase of electricity for found, for town facilities, and I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of vendors out there that sell electricity supposedly cheaper, we have a lot of facilities we're looking at, and I've asked Councilman Delisandro to take the lead on this with the, with the controller, because buying electricity isn't as simple as one would think, so Nick, would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Well, the controller and I had a, had a conference call with the company that would provide the bid, they would go out to bid to several different power companies, and we would set whatever standards that we would like, right, Mark? And there was a whole different lot, he had so many different options to offer us, which was very good. But there were a couple of concerns, because they only like to enter into bids with certain companies that they've done business with in the past, which we weren't totally comfortable with. I've also spoken with the town attorney about possibly doing our own bid, and he said, of course, that's possible, we do that all the time. So I guess it's up to the board to decide what we, what the best route would be. Mark, what, what were your concerns with the, the conference call?
Yeah, I think the concern that we shared was that the particular company that we talked to generally only works with energy suppliers that they are comfortable with, and the winning energy supplier would pay the fee for the cost of, of the services. And we didn't feel that that was going to result in a fair and open process, so we said, we would prefer to pay you to have a completely transparent, unbiased bid process, would you be willing to do something like that? And they agreed, they said they've never done something like that, but they, they said they could do that. But just talking to him, like Councilman Delisandro was saying, there's lots of different ways to secure the energy pricing, various fixed and variable options, the language in the contract, those were things that, you know, we weren't as comfortable with, we've never done something like that before. So there is value in using someone that has done this before, but there's a cost associated with it.
And actually, I'd run into the mayor of the city of Beacon a few months, quite a few months ago, and we were talking about it, and he actually used this firm, because as Randy...
That's how we got their name originally.
Yeah, as Randy said, he said, you know, we've saved a lot of money, but we didn't really know what was the vendor to use, so, he spoke highly of them.
Well, because I know the town of La Grange and Dutchess County did their own bid, and they were very successful also. You know, I, I think this will result in significant savings for the town, you know, because save Christmas probably, Peter, savings here, so.
Can we, like, the little green? Well, let me ask the board this, how would we like to proceed? Would we like to, how, what was the cost of this, of this firm?
It was based on the total kilowatt usage, and it was, you know, .001 times however many kilowatt-hours we use. And it, I'm going to say it's in the ballpark of $2,500 to $4,000.
Okay. That's reasonable, I think, to, you know, be able to, to take a look at these things, or do we want to go out on our own?
Well, I, you know, I think for $4,000, we could do our bid ourselves.
You think so?
And I just didn't feel comfortable with the way he, even after we said that we would pay for the bid, he still says, well, I would instill some companies I don't prefer because of the way they conducted themselves, or something, he said.
We didn't, we didn't get a clear understanding of his objection to using any company, so.
How would we figure what firms we would send out proposals to? How do we do that? Do you just send out proposals, give to you journal, town of East Fishkill?
Well, we'd certainly publicize it, right, so that firms would, could be aware of it through that means, and, and otherwise, we would just send it to any vendors that have expressed interest to this point, any vendors who are aware of that.
We have a list of those companies also he provided us that he's done business with, so we could put a bunch of those people on our list.
We had actually put together with the help of one of the companies, type of RFP about a year ago, and we actually approved sending it out. Would you like to work on, excuse me, would you like to work on an RFP and send it? Would the board be comfortable if Nick and Councilman Delisandro and the controller, anybody else like to be involved in this process? But I, I think it'd be a good thing, and if you want, do the RFP ourselves. Is everybody comfortable with that? Yeah, okay.
I mean, if this is going to save us some money, which I'm sure it will, you know, we might as well do it as soon as possible.
All right. This is just for General Electric, for the town? Is this like...
Yes, electric supply for town facilities.
What do you think about, it's going to be Town Hall, it's going to be the water systems, the sewer systems?
Sewer systems, water systems.
We have a lot of electric...
Well, one, one that I know that really nails us, from what I've always heard, and I don't know, maybe it really doesn't, is like the ball fields, when they click those lights on.
Right, yeah.
Can we get out of that contract? Or is that a lifetime warranty?
Actually, I'm told that that works out very well with that company, Michigan.
No, I heard it costs like $500 bucks to turn it on.
No, I think that that was, and we'll talk with Recreation.
It's just a rumor that always happens.
Is it Iowa?
We went through this several years ago, and I think that the determination was most of it, it was fiction, in fact.
Yeah, we did look into that, and...
It was an old recreation tale.
Why still? And then did we ever get numbers, like, on some of these other fields, what they really cost? Like, can we get a, I mean, we were going to ask Janet to do a breakdown on...
Yes, actually, I think Janet did do an analysis.
... complex costs us per electric a year?
Yeah.
Make sure that...
Yeah, I think she was working on that.
Yeah, she was working on it. We'll have to touch base with her, because we hadn't talked about the electric in quite a while.
Yeah.
So let's touch base with Janet and see if we can get her, her data.
Okay.
Let's see how far she went along with that project.
One other thing, this company and another one that I included in the package offer is an audit of our electric services, where they look and see, is there any misbillings? Are there any, that's free, well, I should say, they get paid out of any savings that they find.
Do they get a percentage of the savings?
A percentage of, say, 33% of the savings.
What, Caroline is very, we have a whiz in the clerk's office on that stuff.
She didn't get 33% either.
She got $20,000, $20,000 back from Central Hudson.
For billing errors that had taken place.
You should do that by year, like.
Yeah. Why don't we do this? If you would like to proceed with the RFP on your own, but maybe we could use this company's services for review, we'll talk to them if they'd like to review the bills or...
I can't think of any reason not to, in the sense that they only get paid out of potential savings, and they have to be able to illustrate those savings, but...
So why don't we do that? We use them for that, and you gentlemen can work on the RFP, and we'll see what we can do. The RFP has already been approved, I believe, by resolution probably a year ago, so I don't think we have to approve putting out an RFP for electric services, so we can go ahead and do that, I think. And we'll talk with that company, see if they'd like to come in and do a review of our bills, and see if they can find us any misbillings. Sounds good. Are we good with that? Everybody comfortable with that? Peter?
Good.
Okay. All right, anybody, any other discussion on the electric? On the electric stuff? Now, the technical term. All right, with that, I don't believe there's anything else to discuss tonight. Liaison reports, real quick, Peter, any thoughts on...
Highway's been working on some drainage, getting plows ready for the winter, a little blacktop and a little roadside work, getting ready for the winter, but we're hoping it doesn't come.
Nick, planning zoning, anything going on?
No, nothing really cooking there, unfortunately, but something else, like Councilman said, we have to come up with ideas to try and bring some business and try and make things easier for businesses to come. Councilman Franco and I put our heads together and said, let's form a economic summit, we're going to call it the East Fishkill Business Summit, and we've talked to, we've talked it through. I've already spoken to our Rotary, it's going to be November 20th, it's a Friday, we're going to start at 8:00 AM right here at Town Hall, have a little breakfast for businesses to come. Then we already started our business, we want to have like a roundtable discussion, so it's very easy and informal, the people could come and speak. I think that we're, we're, right now, we're currently, Councilman Franco and I are doing an inventory of all the open space in the town, from heavy industrial all the way down to B1. And here at the summit, we'll discuss how we could help fill the space, like, all, we all were concerned about. Please, everybody attend it. If, we want the people to come, you want to expand on that, Tom?
Uh, yeah, we just want to, again, turn to the business community, small, medium, large businesses, and we want to find out what East Fishkill is doing right, and what we can be doing better at, and see what we can do to fill those, those vacant lots with businesses here, because we know that when small business prospers here, we're doing well.
Good, good idea, good idea. Councilman Franco, recreation, anything going on?
The fall season's in full swing, and that's it.
Okay.
Everything's going well.
Okay. Councilman Marinero, Hillside Lake, any special park district news?
Not much, there is some drainage, an eastification, some... Some concerned citizens said that there were some issues with the way it was done, they did get in touch with the highway superintendent, and Dennis is going to go out there and review, see if anything better could be done, but besides that, there is not much else going on.
All righty, and we're still waiting on the grant. The last email from Congressman's office was from their grant liaison down in Washington, DC, four or five more weeks of review by our friends at FEMA, so it's just mind-boggling.
Efficient as always.
Yeah, it's just mind-boggling, the federal government in action, so. All right, with that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. The budget hearing next, town board meeting is next week, October 22nd, and the budget public hearing will be on November 5th and begins at 6:00 PM for the special districts. Thank you very much.